Welcome everyone. Let's all look at Councilman Brown as he walks in. Councilman Brown, thank you for joining us. We are coming from our workshop where we had pretty exciting, first we talked about cybersecurity here at Midvale City Hall and then we had the Unified Police Department was nice enough to show us some of the gadgets that they employ for not only our safety as a community but also for their own officer safety as well. So we're glad to have that presentation. So, we will start tonight's city council meeting as we normally do with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Rory, will you see who is here or who is not here?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson, here. Michaela, here. Brown? Here. Billings? Here. And Glover?
Here.
Okay, that is all of us. We are all here. Moving on, we do have a report tonight from the Unified Police Department and to do that, Chief April Morse. Chief, good to see you again.
Good evening, Council Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you for allowing us the time to come in and talk about some of the technology that we utilize. So, it's very helpful. September was an incredibly busy month for Unified Police Department. We had a total of 2,383 calls which resulted in 863 cases. But to really understand what a case is, in the month of September, we had a fatality, car crash on State Street where we used our major accident team to come out and do the reconstruction. State Street was closed for several hours while we conducted that investigation. In addition, we had two homicide events that occurred in Midvale. At this time, everybody involved in any of those incidents are currently in custody. There's nobody outstanding. Obviously, the cases are still proceeding because there's a lot that goes into it before you can present them at trial. But out of the two homicide cases, it's resolved and there's no risk to the public at this time. We also had a problem house that there was complaints of illegal activity, drug distribution. We were able to move on that. We were able to work with the Health Department and get that shut down. So, it was incredibly busy right now for the month of September. Our Violent Crimes Unit has 125 active cases with five new cases. Our Violent Crimes Unit has 125 active cases with five new cases for September. And our Special Victims that does child abuse, child sex crimes, they have 64 active cases out of Midvale with 12 new in the month of September. So it was incredibly busy. Everybody's hopping. We're using a lot of shared services that are housed at the precinct, so it's nice having them so close. We also had time for some positive interactions and some fun. We had some kids from a primary school class come and deliver treat bags to the officers, which made everybody happy. In the bag, they had a little teeny plastic figurine of Jesus. So if you come visit the precinct and you see a little Jesus hidden on top of a door or in some weird spot, that's kind of the thing at the precinct right now. Jesus is always watching. In addition to that, we also had a good time with the business Raising Canes hanging out there and working with them on September 11th for fundraising event and just meeting the community. So it was a mix of a lot of busy work, a lot of really hard, difficult cases, a lot of tragedy, but also enjoying the community that we work with. Unless you guys have any questions, that's my report for September.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do and all that your officers do. I know it's startling to hear some of those numbers, but we're glad that we have the shared services that help deal with some of those more difficult cases. So, thank you. Moving on, we have a special event here tonight. This is the 100th anniversary of the PTA, and we have invited the president of the Utah PTA. Yes, she's kind of a big deal around here. She is the president of the entire Utah PTA. So Julie Cluff is going to come up. She has a presentation for us. We also have a proclamation that Julie told me that I did not have to read because it is quite lengthy, but we are going to make sure this is posted on our city website, and it is signed by all of the council members and me as the mayor. But more importantly, we would like to hear from you and just give us a little rundown on what you do and how we can help you as a community.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Julie Cluff. I'm a Midvale resident. We have lived here for now 12 years, and we bought our house and decided to stay in Midvale seven years ago, so we are happy to be here. We love Midvale via of Washington State, but we still love it here. I wanted to share a little brief history. Utah PTA has a great history, and they have been advocating for many years, actually more than 100. But because of some circumstances within Utah that we're all familiar with, we weren't allowed to join the National Association until there was no more polygamy in Utah. So we had to overcome that, and my relatives included, so it's fine. Could we go to the next slide? Oh, awesome. So in October of 1925, the Utah Education Association held their annual conference, and at the time, the Utah Congress, Mother's Congress, was part of the UEA. We functioned as the home and school section of the UEA. It was at that time that the National PTA President came to that convention and welcomed Utah PTA in to the fold of National PTA. They had worked for over 10 years and had secured lifetime memberships to receive this recognition. And after that, we've had many, many PTA members go on to serve at the national level. I just participated in a statewide call last night, and I was asked to present at this next year's convention for leadership things that we're doing here in Utah. So we're still looked upon as leaders in our country, which is pretty awesome. 1925, as I said, was not the beginning of parent engagement in Utah. Since schools were established right after the pioneers settled, parents have been actively engaged and have partnered with schools to make the best education for their children. The National Congress of Parents was organized in Washington, D.C. in 1897, and Utah had three delegates there. PTA is known for our programs, and that's really the heart of what we do. So chances are, many of you have participated in a PTA program, and you probably don't even realize it. Some of those include art programs and art grants, Battle of the Bands. If you've never been to State Battle of the Bands, please come. It's so much fun. Oh, my gosh, it's one of my favorites. Those kids are awesome, and you get to rock like you're still in the 80s. It's awesome. We have Leadership Academy, which is a premier program for us as well, where we are teaching leadership skills both in PTA and in our nonprofit community. We have Reflections that we hold dear. We celebrate all kinds of ribbon weeks through our schools. We celebrate our teachers, and of course, we do all the fun things like carnivals and field days and class parties and musicals and all of the things. PTA is also known for advocacy. In the state of Utah, over the last 100 years, we have worked to secure warm lunches in schools and milk. We have worked to promote the creation of youth suicide prevention centers and to work on youth mental health, the youth mental health crisis. We have even been the watchdogs for the trust lands. It was a Utah PTA mom who saw that the funds were underdeveloped and being underused and not being used in an appropriate manner and fought to get those to where they're at today. Every school in Midvale gets over $100,000 every year in trust lands money to be used to help with programs within the school, and that is amazing. If you haven't served on a school community council, I encourage you to check those out. Each one of our schools has one, and they are actively working to engage with parents and teachers and to come up with things that help within our schools. In 2007, Utah PTA started a coalition where we fought against vouchers so that we could keep public tax money in our public schools. I feel like that is especially important, having so many Title I schools in Midvale. We need our tax dollars to stay in our schools to educate the most children and to give every child an opportunity to succeed. We, again, have been at the national forefront. In 2018, Karen Conder, who is a Hillcrest graduate, attended National PTA Convention and had a resolution passed at National Convention called High Expectations for Students with Disabilities. So as you can see, we do believe that every student has the best potential, and we advocate for all of them. Our strength and our longevity don't come from our programs and don't come from our advocacy. It actually comes from the people. I have a few people with me. If you're with a PTA, will you stand up? These are my people. These are why I do this. We also have some history people in Utah. So Dr. Rowan Stotz was the PTA President for Utah from 1964 to 1967. He served as a teacher, principal, and superintendent in rural and urban Utah before he became the state president. He also served here in Midvale and lived here in Midvale and served on the Planning Commission and did a lot of work in the community until he died in 1983. Another past Utah PTA President is Ms. Donna Davies. She's kind of my personal hero. All the stories I hear about her, she was a rock star and a total advocate. She served from 1983 to 1985. She is one who rallied her community of senior citizens to come into Midvale Elementary and to have after-school and reading programs to help kids catch up. She was also known to go into gas stations and convince gas station owners to move cigarettes behind the counter so that children couldn't easily access those, and I personally love that. I walk into my local gas station and think, I wonder if this was one that she did. Why I do PTA, why it means so much to me. Like many parents, we do it because we love our kids and we want to give back to the schools that are giving so much to our kids. So here's a picture of my family and my two kids that are both Hillcrest graduates. I also do it because I have found great friendships, and I have learned that I don't have to agree with people to work with people and make an impact. And so many of the people in these pictures are people that I don't necessarily agree with, but I have a great working relationship with them, and I respect their individuality and the diversity that they bring to our organization. I have sold many a PTA blanket at Hillcrest. I might have six or seven in my own house that I've helped with that fundraiser, but I love the time that I've served in my community. The little girl in this picture, she came to our convention a couple of years ago, and she wanted to take a president with our state president because she was going to be a future PTA president. She's why I do this and every other child. I want to make sure that whatever dream that they have, they have the ability to do it. What does this mean for Midvale? I can tell you, I follow all of these schools on social media, and I know that all of them are doing great things. They're selling blankets. They're doing bike rodeos. They're doing carnivals. They're doing parent engagement. They're sending kids to the Capitol to understand what our legislative process is. They are doing so much good in our community. Every year, Utah PTA gives a check to the governor to represent the volunteer hours given through PTA. For the 2024 calendar year, we had just under 1 million hours given as a state. For Utah, that was 3,280 hours, and that equivalent is over $114,000 given to Utah schools, Midvale schools. If you don't remember anything, remember that it is about the people. We need everyone. We need every member. We need every leader on every level to build on our legacy for PTA. For over a century, we have been an advocate for children, families, and education, shaping policies and initiatives that strengthen our communities. As we celebrate 100 years of dedication, we honor our volunteers, leaders, advocates, and have championed for student success and safety and well-being. This milestone reflects a great legacy of impact, collaboration, and unwavering commitment to a brighter future for Utah's youth. We are here today to celebrate that, but we're also here to issue a challenge to all Midvale residents. Please find a PTA and join. Please get involved in our community, and please help us help our children have the most amazing future and to reach their full potentials. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. And any questions from council for Julie?
I just want to appreciate that I just ran into you, and you mentioned it, and I think it's phenomenal. And, you know, I think anytime you have other things that we can recognize PTA, help, you know, I want to brag for a second. I think this is awesome that you're the president. I'm a little bit more prideful because you come from District Four, as did, I think, everyone else that stood up today, right? So we have a great spirit to work and help. And so if we can collaborate more with you, please let us know. Like, I'm kind of sad that, I mean, I'm glad there was that chance meeting. I'm sad that I didn't know about it sooner, and I could have helped facilitate it. So I appreciate you saying something. I think it's great. Appreciate, you know, the other ones that came that, you know, continually try to support Midvale and everything it has to offer. So thanks.
We made a flyer for you guys. I have some information about some past presidents, including another one that is a Hillcrest graduate. Her name is Colleen Taylor. She's awesome. There's also QR codes to all seven schools in Midvale, so if you'd like to conveniently join one of them.
Okay, thank you so much, Julie. And just a part of the resolution, as I said, will have up on our city website. I do want to read the last paragraph, the most important paragraph. "The mayor and city council of Midvale City do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Utah PTA Centennial Celebration Month in Midvale City and encourage all residents to join in celebrating this milestone and to support PTA by joining a local PTA or PTSA in reaffirmation of the commitment to make every child's potential a reality." So we appreciate you giving us that information. Hopefully, maybe you can make it an annual thing and come back and let us know next year. So really appreciate all you do. Thank you so much. Yeah, so when we do, we normally like to take a photo. Council, would you like to take a photo since we have some representatives of the PTA and District Four, as Bryant pointed out? It's a challenge to the rest of the council members. We need some more council districts working. So we'll be back in maybe two minutes. I do just want to note real quick that Julie went from Washington Huskies to the Hillcrest Huskies. So, okay, moving on our agenda, we will proceed to public comments. Anyone wishing to comment on an item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda tonight may address the city council at this time. You'll be given three minutes. We will have a timer up on the screen. We ask you to keep to the three minutes, and if anyone would like to come up now, now is your opportunity. Luke, I thought you might. Just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Luke Maynes. I'm the secretary of the Midvale Community Council. I just wanted to give a brief update on some things we did at our last community council meeting. We picked a logo, which will be on our new website, which should be up soon. But more importantly, we formed three committees to help benefit the city and the community. One is a beautification and holiday decoration committee. I know that Mayor Gatto will be excited about that. That was the main thing he focused on when trying to restart the community council. Yeah, so that is already started. We are holding a Halloween decoration contest. We're still working on prizes and things for that, but our plan is to accept submissions from any businesses or residents in the city to, you know, compete to see who can have the best Halloween decorations. So Spencer Mayers would be a good person to contact if you want to learn more about that. Also, we'll have stuff about it on our website when that's up in the next couple of days. We also formed a active transportation committee. I'm going to be working with Heidi to get that going soon. We're aware of some mile markers and things that were set up in Midvale prior to the pandemic that have been less, people are less aware of them now. We'll be working with David Bird at the library to help make those aware, make people aware of those, and ensure that they're accessible and usable, among other things. And we also formed an events committee that will be hosting events. We don't have any events planned yet, but among the things that we want to either help with or do ourselves is re-bringing back the Cinco de Mayo Festival that we used to do in Midvale and maybe Dia de los Muertos event at the library. So, yeah, those are some of the cool things. If you want to learn more about Midvale Community Council, the website is midvalecc.org. It's just a template page now, but within the next couple of days, we should have plenty of information there. So, thank you.
I have a quick question. For the, I guess this isn't QA, but for the Halloween decoration contest, can, like, could I nominate somebody?
Yes.
Is it just self-submission?
No, it's nominations. You can nominate yourself. You can nominate other people's houses. Maybe let them know so they don't just show up at their door, but.
Sounds good. Luke, can you tell us when your next meeting is?
Oh, yes. So the next main community council meeting will be on October 29th. I'll remind you of that at the next city council meeting, which is before then.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Very exciting about the beautification committee, the active transportation committee as well, and the events committee. So you guys really hit the ground running, and we appreciate the work that you're all doing on the community council. So, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council at this time? Come on up. Just state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colin Coppola. Thanks for hearing me, and thanks Mayor Gettle for corresponding with me. I had applied for a variance for an external ADU on my single-family lot. I found something interesting that I just, I think deserves a hard look. I hope you'll agree that what I present is a compelling argument for a change that would create more affordable housing in Midvale and would correct an unfairness that exists currently. Specifically, this discovery is about the 6,000-square-foot lot size minimum for an external ADU and the percentage of single-family parcels that miss that mark. To get that percentage, I used the Planning and Zoning Division Interactive Map. I took the assumption that any lots under .06 acres, which is about 2,600 square feet, wouldn't even really have the space for an external ADU. So I use that as the low end of the filter range. And on the top end, I use .13 acres because .14 is just over the 6,000-square-foot minimum. So this range defines the number of lots that might have a physical layout to add an external ADU, but that are limited by the 6,000-square-foot minimum. Of the total number of parcels, which is 9868, the range I described is just 1,025, so it's slightly over 10%. I couldn't filter by the single-family 1 and 2 zoning, so that range shows lots throughout the whole city. That said, there are large chunks of parcels within the range that are not SF1 or SF2 zoning. And my guess, without having the complete data, is that with those taken out, the 10% number is more like maybe 5 or 6%. I fall, I fall within that very small percentage of owners. My property is almost perfectly set up for an ADU, but my lot size is shy of 6,000 square feet by just a few hundred. Enhancing the accuracy of the minimum lot size number would enable me and others like me to afford to live in Midvale. It would give us the same rate that 95% or so of the rest of the city's owners have. Without it, I think a huge imbalance of unfairness exists. It contrasts the goals of the general plan, and it contributes to the affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. And I will, if you want me to, Colin, I can share your email correspondence with the council members, and if any of them want to reach out to you, they can do so. Is that a good plan? Okay. Yep, appreciate you coming in. Would anyone else like to address the council at this time? Okay, not seeing anyone flinch. Okay, we will move on then to council reports. First up, council member Bonnie Billings.
Thank you, Mayor. Just right off, I do have to leave early tonight because I have a flight to catch, so hopefully no issues there. But I just wanted to, last week, we held a candidate forum where we were able to hear from all the candidates running this year for, to serve Midvale City. And I just wanted to thank the staff for putting that together. Ben Winslow was our moderator, so I wanted to kind of extend another thank you to him. And it went really, really well. You can find, if you weren't able to watch live, which, what were you doing? You can find it on our YouTube page to watch. It was really exciting hearing the vision and plans that each of the candidates had for Midvale. And then I, with that, I also want to remind everybody that ballots are going to be mailed out on October 14th, and it's going to be really important that you find your ballot and you fill it out and you return it. Municipal elections are incredibly important, and so also not in addition to you filling out your ballot and turning it in, talk to your friends and neighbors as well and encourage them to get their ballots in as well. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, council member. Have a safe flight and have a wonderful vacation. Moving on to council member Paul Glover.
I'd just like to thank the PTA for being here. It made me think back a lot of years. In the early 80s, my, I had five children, and they all went through PTA. My wife was the PTA vice president and then the president of Midvale Elementary School. But each of my children went through all of the Midvale schools and graduated from Hillcrest, and we always belonged to the PTA, so great organization. That's all this year.
Okay, thank you, council member Glover. Moving on, council member Heidi Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to echo Bonnie regarding check your ballots, talk about it. Everybody should be voting. Also, thank everybody that was involved in the candidate forum, UPD staff and the candidates as well. Thank you guys for all making the time to attend that. And then I would actually like to give a special thanks to McMillan Elementary and Miss Sarmiento's sixth-grade class. They invited the mayor and I to attend and speak to the kids about how local government works and the importance of public meetings, and I cannot tell you how much fun I had with those kids. It amazed me, the questions they came up with, how engaged they were, and they really, really want to learn. So I would say to any of the council members, if you have a chance, please do that. It was, it was literally, it was so much fun. I walked out of there so invigorated and so happy, and I'm still getting emails from the kids. So if you have the opportunity, I would do it. Yeah, I think that's all I, oh, and thank you to the PTA as well, along the lines of children's education. Very important, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. And yes, even though that school is in Murray, I was happy to attend. We're going to do a switch where the Murray mayor comes to Midvale and does something. Details later. Moving on to council member Brian Brown.
I have a couple of things. First, you know, thanking the PTA. I will say during COVID, I foolishly signed up to be on the Midvale Elementary School Community Council while I was on the city council, and I did not realize the amount of work that that, that council has. I highly encourage everyone to do a term with it, the community council. They decide a lot of different things, from policies on safety to land grant money being spent. I was blown away. It was just a little bit too much for me to do any more terms while I'm here. But that's a volunteer. So, you know, we really thank those people. If you have the opportunity, you should try to do a term. It's really good for the community. And second, a couple of weeks ago, there was the school district golf tournament. And this year, you know, sort of in remembrance of Mont, you know, he really used to organize that. You know, I think everyone there was very aware, you know, of that situation, but still had a great time. I got to golf with three of the people on Glenn's team. It was really great. You know, I wish the residents could see, you know, these employees because they super care about each other. I was just impressed, you know, they talking about each other's families. They know each other so well, and they kept talking about just Midvale, you know, and improving the place. So it was just really great to see, you know, to be at this event and see the staff sort of interact. I was probably the, I was the odd man out annoying Jeremy to death in the cart. But it was fun, so I had a good time. That's all.
Okay, thank you, council member Brown. And last but not least, council member Denise Michelash.
Yeah, I want to say also thank you to the PTA. No matter if we're not volunteering, we've all been impacted by it growing up, whatever we've done, so thank you so much. Just a few things. We met with the Utah Daughters of the Pioneer, and we're getting a new marker over at the Drown Cabin, and I just want to say a big thank you to them for reaching out to us about that, and then also the city staff for taking that on. So that'll be exciting. It'll either be in the fall or the spring. Also want to call out that we're on Week Three of the Citizens Police Academy, the mayor and I. And what you saw earlier around their drone is like just one little bit of all the amazing data intelligence, time they spend working out through those different special victims around the violent crimes, but then also the wellness around the police officers, I think was probably one of the most impactful learnings that we had and how much we need to take care of them so that they can take care of us. So just want to say thank you for them for inviting me and look forward to the next seven weeks.
Okay, thank you, council member Michelash. For me, my mayor's report, I do have a couple of things. I'll try to be brief. I did also want to thank those who participated in the candidate forum, incumbents and non-incumbents alike. It is not easy to put yourself out there for all of us to be asked questions, and, you know, it's a nerve-wracking experience, but I think everyone who participated in that event did a really good job, in my opinion. So we're thankful for the city staff who was able to put that together and thankful to Ben Winslow for moderating. Also, we have a planting event this Saturday on October 11th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. This will be at Bingham Junction Park, so if anyone is interested in coming to that, we are planting some plants in the wetlands, part of the Jordan River Trail. So this is in conjunction with the Tracy Aviary and the Jordan River Commission, and they said that they could use, you know, maybe 10 or so volunteers from the community. I'm going to be there, obviously. It sounds like something I would do, so I'll be there. So if anyone is interested in joining on Saturday morning, be happy to give you that information. Earlier today, I did a mural walk with the senior citizens at the senior center next door to us. Very, very exciting, and I want to put it out there to folks, there was literally one mural as we were walking. It was like, I have never seen that mural in my life. And I think it was Aubrey, maybe, who pointed out like, oh, yeah, that one's pretty new. It just went up a few weeks ago. So if you haven't been out to check out our murals on Main Street, you might find one that you've never seen before. If I could find one, I feel like I'm pretty well-versed on the murals, and I was like, wait a minute, that one looks new and pretty cool. It is hard to describe, but maybe like, I don't know, Avatar, Mermaid Woman, maybe, something like that. It's all in the, art is in the eye of the beholder, so whatever, that's what I saw personally, but whatever you see might be different. Two things real quick, not happy things, but I did want to note Danny Lucero, who lived on Fifth Avenue here in Midvale. There are so many folks talking about him. Unfortunately, he passed away unexpectedly last week, and he was a character. He owned a catering company called Big D's Catering, which was the food that was served at, I think it's, I forget what it's called now, but it was Three Alarm Saloon. I'm looking at Heidi. She's going to punch me for looking at her. Rusty Nail Saloon is the place now, so he was the person who made a lot of their barbecue for a very long time. And in fact, if you've ever been in the avenue smelling barbecue, that was him probably cooking. But he passed away, and I just wanted to note, he had quite a passion for Old Town Midvale, and he would let me know when he did not like something that we were doing, but in a nice, respectful way, because, you know, even though I may have disagreed and he may have disagreed with me, he was very passionate about his community, and I wanted to note his passing, and we hope that his family is comforted in this time. On a similar note, mayor of Mill Creek, Jeff Silvestrini, has announced his retirement due to some health issues. And I wouldn't normally mention mayors of other cities, although I did mention briefly the mayor of Murray as well tonight. But Jeff Silvestrini's been such an instrumental person in the Unified Police Department, the Unified Fire Authority, and, you know, Midvale is better because of his leadership on those boards. And I want to wish him, my friend, who has become a little bit of a mayoral mentor to me, wish him a happy retirement and best wishes for a speedy recovery as he has some difficult health issues to face over the next year. Sorry, this is Brian's thing to get emotional, but again, second week in a row, it get me too. But if you see Jeff Silvestrini or can reach out to him, he's, as I said, very instrumental in our place in the Unified Police Department and Unified Fire Authority, so we wish him the best. Moving on, city manager Matt Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing this evening, as many of you probably recall, I think it's been a couple of years now, we created a traffic control committee. The intent of that committee, or the reason we created it, is that we receive on a fairly regular basis inquiries from particularly members of the public, so non-staff-generated inquiries about putting in different forms of traffic control, ranging from parking restrictions up to Hawk Light signals for crosswalks and those kinds of things. And that also means ranging from hundreds of dollars to thousands of dollars in order to install. At the, when we created it, the purpose of it was to, rather than taking everything as they come in, was to say, because this has significant budget impact, we'd want to try to take groupings of requests, compare them against each other, and see which ones we want to fund. And so we had met quarterly, sort of ad hoc, as applications came in. We made an adjustment this year where we were going to have the fixed schedule of traffic control committees once a quarter to review submissions that come in. And tomorrow is actually the traffic control committee for the previous quarter or this quarter. And then, so as you have requests coming in, that is the route to send them. They can, there's information available online, or they can reach out to the Community Development Department, and we can get them the applications that they need. The last thing is, with regards to that for you, is that it is something that we are looking at making some adjustments to, because one of the things that has cropped up from time to time is that we do have a requirement as part of the traffic committee that people go out and get signatures from their neighbors on whatever item it is that they want to get. What we have seen, though, and while in hindsight it seems like it might be fairly obvious, what we have seen is something where they get a substantial number of residents to sign on. We move forward with making, putting no parking somewhere, and then that's when the neighbors who disagree come out and say that they don't, didn't want that in the first place. And so we're looking at how to sort of make adjustments to that process in order to make sure that we're doing a better job of capturing the full sentiment on an issue rather than just the people who feel very interested in having that adjustment made. So we're continuing to go through, we're reviewing applications tomorrow, but that's just something that we're, we're looking at in order to make sure that in the future and the things that we do move forward with. You know, as we've found, there is nothing you can do where everyone will like it, but I'm trying to make sure that we're, we're providing the most benefit to the largest group of people. So anyway, as those things come in, make sure you tell them to look at the traffic control committee application. That's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. We have several public hearings on the agenda for tonight. So I did want to ask, Mike, are you okay to stick around through those? Because I know you're up on the agenda. I know you love this sort of thing, so, okay. So we will proceed with public hearings. First public hearing tonight is to receive public comment on proposed Mid Valley Sewer District Boundary Line adjustments. And to discuss that, Brandon Anderson, who I did a double take because the last time I saw him, he was not wearing a shirt and tie, so he must have.
Sorry to disappoint. All righty. So in the process of Mid Valley Sewer doing a study and reviewing their district boundary lines, they went and did that, they held a public hearing. This is what they evaluated, where they were against all the other entities, the other cottonwood improvement districts, cities, and whatnot. And so this is, they were just assessing what's there. The main component of that was there were some property owners that would be affected because they were not taxed under the right Mid Valley Improvement District. They were Midvale City or other, and so that changed. And so they just were assessing those as they went around to each one of these. You can see on the map, this isn't our boundary line of the Midvale City, but it's Mid Valley's Improvement District line. And you can see the ones in green are the ones affected. There weren't, there were 16 properties that were affected, but not all of them were affected for the same reasons, but most of them just got labeled in different areas, and so they were going to change the taxes on them. This, this table shows those owners, what's changing on them and what's not changing on them, and their addresses. So this is the actual details of it, what the property taxes were before and after. They are currently served by the right district. They just weren't being, having the fees and the taxes appropriated in the right manner. So with that, there's no financial impact to the Midvale City. As I said, those last two bullets are what I just explained to you, so.
Okay. Do you want?
Just for one clarifying thing, that you might have said I might have missed it, it might be the car show thing all over again. So as you saw that boundary line, those. So as you saw that boundary line, those affected parcels are on the east side of Mid Valley service area. And then the east side of Mid Valley is the Cottonwood Improvement District service area. So the affected parcels were never before or after serviced by Midvale, and so that adjustment is really between those two service districts.
Yeah.
So how do we get involved in that?
They, so they originally came to us in 2024, and we looked at it and said, this doesn't seem to affect us at all. And so we just told them, from a staff level, we're okay because it doesn't affect us, Midvale City. They moved forward, and then came back and said the Lieutenant Governor's Office told them that they needed resolutions from all of the municipalities that are touched by the Mid Valley Sewer District. And so we're just tightening that up now.
Okay, that makes sense then. Yeah, this resolution is for us, we were kind of late to the party because we thought we'd done what we needed to do and discussed it with staff and approved it that way, and we didn't. Then we got it sent back, now we're looking for the resolution on it.
Any other questions for Brandon from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion to open this to public comment.
Mayor, a motion, we open public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we are accepting public comment for this agenda item, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close public comment.
Mayor, a motion, we close the public comment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor of closing public comment, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment is closed, we do have an action item for the council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2025-R-60, approving the Mid Valley Sewer District Boundary Line Adjustment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Rory, will you call the yeses and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Michelash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Second public hearing tonight, receive public comment regarding amending various sections of the SSC, RC, and C1? CI zones, oh yeah, CI zones of the Midvale City Municipal Code related to vehicle-related uses, delete the definition for vehicle-related use from Section 17-2-22, and establish Section 17-6-5 regulating vehicle-related uses. And if my eyes don't deceive me, this is not Elizabeth Arnold, this is Vendeline.
Yes, you are right, and since you had to read such a lengthy introduction, I will try to make this quick. What you're looking at here is basically the gist of this amendment. It pulls together regulations that we've already had, and consolidates them into one section within our supplementary regulation section in the code. That makes it a lot easier for the city to maintain the code. It also makes it easier for potential developers to find things. The detail here is that these rules are in four different zones right now. There's a little bit of housekeeping that we've done. The definition section got shortened, I would say, vehicle-related uses was taken out because it's redundant, each use that's within the definition is also defined separately. So there really wasn't a reason to have that. Then vehicle sales minor within the text of some of the zones was taken out because that's also redundant, that also is established in this text here. And the other change that happens is that if you look at the use section in each of the zones, the designation of these vehicle-related uses was changed. So currently, these vehicle-related uses are either conditional use permits, or they are administrative conditional use permits. Which means the hearing that goes along with, if it's for conditional use permit, then the planning commission also has to act. In practice, what that means is you have a small car dealership that, let's say, locates in an existing building on State Street, which happens quite frequently, or in other more industrial areas. The city has to advertise the hearing, the staff review that happens that points to the planning commission, and then there's a public hearing. Many of these, or really the vast majority of these uses are, you know, they are transient. The dealership is there for a year, then it goes away. It might be replaced by another one, it may not be. And all of this is still wrapped up in an administrative process. So a hearing is something that in a way shouldn't necessarily happen because everything is regimented in the ordinance, there's certain requirements. If the applicant needs them, then they're entitled to the permit. If they don't, then they aren't, that's really no discretion. So that's why we've taken that step to do this. And this in our criteria for cortex amendment, it's really something that's, you know, explains the original intent, makes it easier to work with, and, yeah, that's really all that I have for you. Do you have any questions about this?
Any questions for Vendeline? Okay, this also is a public hearing, is there a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public comment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment is now open, if there's anyone who would like to speak on this issue, you'll have three minutes to do so. Not seeing anyone, is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, any opposed? Public comment is over for this one, there is a motion on the screen for council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 2025-O-16, authorizing a text amendment to various sections of the SSC, RC, and CI zones of the Midvale City Municipal Code relating to vehicle-related uses, delete the definition for vehicle-related use from Section 17-2-22, and establish Section 17-6-5 regulating vehicle-related uses.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Rory, will you call the yeses and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Michelash.
Yes.
And Glover.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on to our third action item, receive public comment regarding amending various sections of the SF1, SF2, RM12, and RM25 zones of the Midvale City Municipal Code relating to master plan developments. And again, Vendeline.
Thank you. This section in our code has given us some issues in the past. And so we decided to look at it as staff, and to figure out, you know, are there things that we could do as a city to improve, what our code, you know, requires? And if there are any ways to streamline the process, and at the same time, really get to where we want to be as a city, to be, you know, simple, precise, and clear with the developers, and at the same time, maybe get more of what we are looking for in these types of developments. And on the screen, and in the staff report, you know, you could see a little bit how the system is currently set up, and what we are proposing here as staff. And the main differences really are that, number one, we are looking at this in a different way. Currently, any project that's one acre or more is required in these zones to have this approach with the master plan development. That has its ups and downs. It really means you have, you always have an HOA involved because you are requiring private open space. So what we're proposing is to flip that paradigm just a little bit. When we get a development that proposes common open space because it's viewed to be the right idea, then the master plan developments standards come into play. So a developer, you could say, opts into it. So that's the one thing, so keep this sort of in the back of your minds for a moment. Other criteria here, open space, you know, most people like open space. As a city, we don't really have very much public open space. We have some, but it's not necessarily distributed the way we want to in the city, and overall, we don't have terribly much. If we get development in this context, we can require open space. In the current ordinance, there were two different types of open space, and everyone got confused, what is the difference? Why do we have improved common open space? And why do we have a category that's just labeled open space? So we decided the second category is in a way somewhat meaningless. And at the same time, 15% open space, like the city currently requires, isn't really that much. So the new proposal requires 25%, and this improved common open space is what, you know, if you think about, PUD would be the private park that has a pavilion in it, playground, things along those lines. Then there was an approach to parking that, from the implementation and legal ramifications, is not very easy or safe to implement. The ordinance basically said, the planning commission decides upon presentation of an analysis. And that's, that's sort of thin ice to tread on for us as a city, you know, implementable standard that's fair to everyone is a lot better. So in this new version of the ordinance, we put in two off-street parking stalls plus half a stall per unit as guest parking. With the provision that the guest parking can be part of people's driveways, so it would have to be basically a separate parking lot. So, and now it's also sort of overtly, and they are that building footprint lots are allowed in the old version of the ordinance, that was always a struggle to really justify that. So this applies to the SF1 and SF2 zones. We have master plan development standards also in our high-density zones. And the changes are really the same, that's one caveat. Currently, the master plan development standards in the RM12 and RM25 zones also require that the developer basically maxes out the density. And in discussions with the planning commission, we decided this doesn't necessarily make sense to, in this context, to max out the density because both zones also allow, if you want to, to just have single-family homes, for example. So why take out, you know, the option to develop single-family homes, or twin homes, instead of having multifamily projects? So that's what you see here, with the strikeout, that's really the main difference. Otherwise, everything works the same. The other caveat is parking, on the parking provisions, it aligns with the multifamily development standards, like we have on the books right now. So there's no guessing what might the planning commission approve. It's just follows the normal standard we have. And, you know, with regard of our criteria, we've also seen that in the staff report, it fits neatly into that. And this is the motion, do you have any questions?
The parking is, so it still stays the same as it was as far as the parking for projects?
So, in the current approach, the ordinance simply says whatever the planning commission approves. So there is, there's a lot of room for the developer to come in and say, well, let's say, we may have a project here for people that are 55 and older, therefore, people won't have as many cars. And then it's hard for the city to argue against that. So with a new approach, we basically go with our standard that we have in other contexts to the same standard. And this would apply when someone comes in in one of the higher-density zones, and also wants to build a higher-density project. So it gives us more protection in that sense.
I like the idea, I'm just, it's like, I always want more parking.
Sure.
It's like, we've had so many disasters of these high-density stuff, and not enough parking. I'd like to see some way that we could increase the parking, just so that there's more there. Every single one I've seen, we end up having problems.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, the planning commission shares that sentiment. There were some ideas on how to maybe get to, at least in practice, to a higher parking count. Unfortunately, the legislature has preempted the cities on a lot of that. As an example, you're probably familiar with tandem parking. Well, the legislature has said cities have to allow it.
Allow what parking?
Tandem parking.
Oh, front to back?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
That's one thing, or, you know, an idea of, don't count the spots within the parking garage. Because many people have things in their garage, which means the cars get parked on the driveway or on the street. Well, that's been preempted too by the legislature, we can't, we simply can't do that. So, but...
Those are my concerns.
Yeah.
So from a practical standpoint, let's say you, in one of the zones, you put in 20 townhomes or something like that. That would require, besides the two spots, whatever.
For a townhome?
Per townhome, it would require .5 per unit, which would be 10 guests. So from a practical standpoint, that would be a lot more parking on some of the projects that have sort of that 20 units, like the ones on Roosevelt that caused the big stake, I think there's like five, right?
Yeah, and I agree 100%, I like that part.
So that would be really good, so from a practical standpoint, that sounds great. I'm like kind of embarrassed that I didn't realize that it was, I knew on summit level, planning commission had that discretion, but I didn't realize it was just as determined by planning commission for parking, which is one of the most hot-button topics we have, and that, man, that's a group that that probably took a lot of bullets, so to speak, you know, at meetings for that. And so I think this is better for them, where there's these numbers. I think we don't have a lot of... I think we don't have a lot of SF one, SF two areas that have enough acreage left to, to do too many master plans, probably, right?
Yeah.
So it's really that RM twelve and RM twenty-five, this will come in play. And like I said, that those Midvale townhomes by me and that twenty, I think there's twenty on one side and I think there's five or six spots, right? So if there was double, that would be phenomenal. The developer would obviously not agree. But that, you know, from a resident standpoint, there would be a lot, a lot more parking in those. I don't know, you know, unfortunately with these things, we try to always improve and do better and there's sometimes unintended, unintended consequences. I think the limited space available makes that less likely, right? We don't have, you know, a ton of acreage left. So I, here, I agree with Paul. I, I, I want to make sure that parking's taken care of. I think from a practical standpoint, this is way better for that planning and zoning group or the planning commission to not have to hear arguments, litigate, that's what it feels like, litigate, well, you need this or that. I guess what we could always do if, if a group comes in and, and unfortunately, you can't retroactively imply it, but if, if it doesn't work, we can adjust it.
Sure.
If we need point seven or whatever, you know, you'd not be willing to, but I think overall it's a good idea.
The planning commission had a really healthy discussion about this and they had the same concerns was how do we get more parking that make it reasonable? So they thought through it for quite a bit, so I appreciate them taking the time to do that and try and figure out a solution.
Well, and hopefully this, as council member Brown said, will make their jobs and lives much easier and when you have a formula that you easily can put in and number of parking spots comes out, it's perfect.
And did they like the formula number? Like not begrudgingly, did they, you know, say, hey, no, this I think would be good?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, they, of course, like, like you, they would always like to have more. The, the difficulty is if we overshoot these types of requirements, then we run a risk of being subject of the next legislative session.
And, and I appreciate that and we need to be careful that, however, Midvale's an interesting spot where we have limited lots, right? We, we get to a point where this is our last project, right? And well, great legislators, you're mad. Well, we've already approved this other one, they have to go forward. But sorry, Wes Jordan, you have, you have a bunch of property you have to deal with. So like, I think we need to be careful of it, but I think we're in a spot that, you know, I don't know what'll happen, you know, to us long term.
Any other questions for Vendeleen or staff? Okay, broken record tonight. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public comment?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are open for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to comment on this item, please step up. You'll be given three minutes. Seeing Luke flinch a little, yes, come on up. And just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name's still Luke Baines. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to express a potentially differing opinion on parking. I know a lot of people feel like as much parking as possible is the best, but the more parking that you build around things, the less walkable they become and the more needs for cars there is and the more need for cars means there's more need for parking. And so it's kind of a cyclical thing when you build a car-centered community, you have to build for a car-centered community. But if, in order for Midvale to meet its goals of being a kind of a walkable active transport thing, one of the steps towards that is to focus less on car-centered things. And so I, I know me and a lot of people in my demographic are more in favor of, you know, buildings that don't have a huge, like, you know, this is the building and then the footprint of the parking is like this, which makes it impossible to get anywhere without a car. And so just, you know, the alternate perspective there, you know, not to say that I love trying to find parking and having it be difficult. I understand that frustration all too well, but there's, there's definitely a balance to be struck and you didn't hear a lot of perspective from that side. So I just wanted to bring that up and say that I'm fine with as little parking as possible. So.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Point taken. Would anyone else like to address council? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is over on this item and there is a motion on the board for council.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O dash seventeen, authorizing a text amendment to various sections as the SF dash one, SF dash two, RM twelve and RM twenty-five zones of the Midvale City Municipal Code relating to master plan developments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, what will you call the yeses and nos?
Yes, council member Brown.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Clever?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to public hearing D, received public comment regarding amending several sections within chapter seventeen dash seven dash eleven of the Midvale City Municipal Code entitled Main Street Form-Based Code. The amendments clarify provisions related to noise, outdoor dining, cooking, light pollution, signage and building uses. Vendeleen, we're getting our money's worth out of you today.
Yes, you sure are. And I, I hope I provide your money's worth.
So far, so good.
So this amendment pulls in several things. It's in a way a little bit of a cleanup item. There are also things that, that were driven by, you know, construction that has happened. So I'll, I'll go through, through everything and let you know what's going on. So first of all, the placement of office users on Main Street. We've discovered in the last couple of years since development has picked up that the spaces that are on street level sometimes get taken by offices. And while we, you know, love offices, you know, they bring, bring all sorts of services into the community, they don't always bring onto Main Street necessarily what we want. And we would want more pedestrian traffic and people who stay, who may go to one location and then to the next and to the next and to the next on Main Street and, you know, bring us activity, sales taxes and everything that goes along with it. So for that reason, this change proposes that offices are allowed, but only in upper floors, not on the main floor. So that reserves the main floor of the building and, you know, think about the frontage onto Main Street especially for, you know, any type of retail store for restaurants and so on. So that's, that's the first big change. And it appears twice because the, this code is built a little differently than all the other codes in our ordinance and there are two different tables, tables that address similar things. The next item here is about outdoor dining and it changes the approach to outdoor dining a little bit. First of all, it sort of gives a hard and fast deadline when music needs to stop. And that's ten thirty PM. In the current, in the current version of the ordinance, it says outer music shall not be audible off premises. That's somewhat harder to enforce and it may be, maybe not quite fair to some of the commercial users because you think about residential contexts, single family homes even, well, oftentimes you can, you are able to hear things from the neighboring property. Even if it's just the neighbor's dog or conversations so on. So this keeps it, you know, simple, ten thirty PM, no outdoor music. And this is of course in the commercial context, in the outdoor dining context. Next, currently, if you have a business that wants to do things outside, let's say have a grill, a smoker, you can't have that currently. The new version of the ordinance allows that, you know, within reason and it requires that there's twenty feet of distance between your outdoor dining area and residential zone boundary. Of course, there are people living, you know, within the Main Street Form-Based Code area, which is basically everything that runs onto Main Street since, you know, we have lots of mixed-use buildings. But this is geared towards, you know, the adjacent residences, especially, you know, going east, that are in a different zone, they are all in a residential zone. Then the next change here addresses lighting. We have a provision that currently that doesn't allow applied spotlights. And inadvertently, the city in a way violated that provision itself with the, our new lights that got installed. We think about.
He wasn't supposed to say that.
The lighting features, but yeah, now it leaked out, I'm sorry. So anyway, that's why this got struck. And then signage, those are really just changes that I would say are mostly housekeeping. It was hard to find the regulations on temporary signs and on A-frame signs, so we slid that up a couple of paragraphs in the ordinance where we thought most people would be looking for it. The other part was that we made it clearer and simpler to determine where these signs can be. The current version of the ordinance, this had, that they can't be in the clear view area or in the public right of way, we just made it simple and said they can be in a bullbout or in the park strip. Reason being that you don't want these signs right in the middle of the sidewalk because then the sidewalk is obstructed. And there was one other item that came up in a review and that's that the, you know, the loud size for lettering in on signs within the Form-Based Code was really unrealisticly small and so we bumped up the percentage. So it used to say, well, currently it says that thirty percent of the sign area can be used up by the lettering. We bumped that up to seventy percent. If you, if you think about, you know, a simple sign that says, let's say groceries, or if you, if your sign is this big and it can only, the letters themselves can only be a third of that, it just doesn't work and it's not what, you know, what's customary. And then we took out a portion of the definition that seems to not really apply. We've probably seen that in the staff report, offices and professionals, there was a portion in the definition that says that these types of professions only operate with appointments and that's really not true. And again, this is a text amendment that tries to implement the general plan, but it also tries to clarify things to make them easier and also fairer to work with.
Any questions for Vendeleen? I know that was a lot of info and a lot of things that are touching on Main Street, so there probably are some questions or comments from the public at least.
I was just wondering why we went ten thirty instead of ten o'clock on the noise ordinance? Being that these, I mean, to the east, this is all surrounded by residential, I'm wondering if we might want to match that just to keep consistency and I'm assuming that would create a little bit less calls for UPD having to deal with, it's ten fifteen, why is their music still on?
Yeah.
So that would.
I think the thought was to give sort of a little bit of a transition period, but I can, I can see that, you know, to just sync it up exactly with the noise ordinance, that's, that's a different way. It's definitely an option.
Yeah. It'd be the only one.
My thoughts on that real quick, the great question, so that's exactly the question I had too, like, why didn't we go with eleven PM or, or ten PM? Why did we go in the middle for ten thirty? I, I think that this area, Main Street, is, is so unique and unlike other, you know, single-family areas and residential areas that, you know, it would be a place where I think that we could have a longer period of time where music should be allowed for outdoor consumption. But, you know, it's interesting that we chose to extend it by a half hour. I don't know if that, so the Pearl does like live concerts and things like that, so how would that impact them? Because sometimes I think they do go a little bit later into the evening.
And the Pearl, I would expect that you, you don't have the noise problem since it's inside of a building.
I think it's just outdoor.
Yeah, and this is, this is, yeah. And that's correct. I mean, this is within the context of outdoor dining.
Well, like, you know, Grill Fest, for instance, they, that was the component of the Pearl had that outdoors. But yeah, my initial thought, this impacts the Bambino now, it does have live music on the, in the evening, so I don't know if they, I don't think they're open past ten thirty, so I don't think that would impact them too much. But, you know, something to consider, I think, you know, as we develop Main Street more and there's more options for folks, I mean, we're going to have Salt Fire, which is not going to close at nine thirty or ten o'clock, they'll be open later. It'd be a shame to have like a good musical number and, you know, it's ten thirty, wrap it up.
I think for me, that ten o'clock does work because these events will be Monday through, Sunday. We have a lot of residents right here packed in. For me, with a mom, I, music was going on Tuesday night at ten thirty, I'm not going to be abundantly pleased.
If you have children.
Yeah.
That would be my only thing. If it were, you know, if it were on weekends, I'd be like, oh yeah, go all night long, that's fine. But to the point where we're not going to say that, it's Monday through Sunday, we need to, I think we need to be considerate of our neighbors, especially where some of them are already a little hesitant with the changes that we're making on Main.
Any other questions or comments from council? This is also a public hearing. Is there a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public comment?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is open for public comment. If anyone would like to address the council on this issue, please step to the microphone. You'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, okay. Is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed on this item and there is a motion on the board for council to consider.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero dash nineteen, which amends several sections within chapter seventeen dash seven dash eleven of the Midvale City Municipal Code entitled Main Street Form-Based Code as provided in Attachment A with the finding noted in the staff report. Does this need to be tabled with us making the change to ten PM?
That's a question for Garrett.
You asked that after I said it. Just kidding.
Yes, until we have it in writing, we won't be able to pass it tonight if that's the change that we're trying to make.
So I think we also need the council to weigh in on ten thirty.
Heidi, or council member Robinson would like to change that to ten PM to match our other noise ordinances. Is that the consensus of the council?
I'm good with that.
I'm seeing.
I'm good.
I mean, that seems to make sense.
I get the ten thirty though. I think it was music stops at ten and then they could transition and take down their equipment and sometimes that's noisy, so I do get the ten thirty, give them.
So I do get the ten thirty, give them that little leeway versus like off at ten. But they can do it both ways, both times.
Okay, if there is then a motion to table this item to a future council meeting? Is there?
Motion to table this item?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this action item. Rory, will you call the ayes and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Garrett, was that sufficient?
Can we modify the, the tabling until the next meeting? And then if you're okay with it, maybe a suggestion is if the change is made at ten PM, is everyone okay putting it on the consent agenda and making it part of that motion as well?
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Do you want me to do it?
Try that one.
No, I'm just kidding.
I try. How long do you want to stay here tonight?
Yes, yeah. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance under consideration now to the next meeting and move it to the consent agenda.
I think you said approve.
Mayor, I move that we table.
There we go.
Did I say approve? Oh, I was reading right there.
Yeah.
Mayor, I move that we table the ordinance being considered right now to the next meeting and put it on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We are a professional council up here. Motion and a second. Rory, we call the ayes and nays on this one.
Yes. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mikulaj?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, that is officially tabled. It'll come back next meeting. Our final public hearing of the evening is to receive public comment regarding adopting the Midvale City water use and preservation element of the general plan. And again, Vendeline.
Thank you. I attached a, an article from, that was on KSL not terribly long ago. And you may have seen this article. It seems anyone who lives in Utah has heard some type of a public message regarding the Great Salt Lake. The thing that was interesting for me about this article in the context of the water use and preservation plan was this. The Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints directed ten thousand acre feet of water to the lake last year. Mostly through water saved by residents through conservation efforts. This year's release releases follows similar pattern. And then a quote here from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, "We are grateful to be able to contribute to another release of water to the Great Salt Lake. Our community is taking positive steps to achieve levels of water conservation that are critical for a sustainable future. Releases like this depend on everyone making a consistent commitment to use our limited water resources wisely." And as part of this water use and preservation element, the cities are required to meet with the water providers. And for me, that meant I first of all sat down with Public Works since part of our water we do on our own. And then Public Works and I had a meeting with the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And they went through all the different programs that they have on water conservation. And they actually made almost the same statement that, you know, after we asked them, well, you know, everyone here is about water conservation. And it's been so consistent due to the crisis with the Great Salt Lake that, you know, sometimes people get tired of it in a way, a little bit. And you can see that also in the numbers that, you know, water consumption has hit bottom, but now it's creeping, creeping up again. And most of that is really is driven by outdoor water use, you know, sprinkling your lawn, things like that. And so we were told basically the same thing that the Jordan, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District has, you know, they, they have a long-range plan. They ignore the population is growing and that we need more water. So they do have some, you know, water banked in a way. And that's the water that they can release. It's sorts in Utah Lake basically. And when there is, when they don't need that water for any other uses, they are able to release it. And so that in and of itself is, I guess, one motivation, I think, for people to really stick with conserving water. And this water use and preservation element is basically, you could say, homework that the legislature gave the cities. This became a required general plan element pretty recently. So for a long time, you know, cities could have something like this or they didn't have to. But I think the, the idea here is to drive water conservation more into all the different processes that governments and including local governments really get into. And one of those last frontiers is also urban development. And so we are, we are lucky enough with our size of city. There's already a lot of work that has been done. The water conservation plan and our drinking water system master plan are both required. And this plan really, I mean, you could say about eighty percent of this plan builds on those master plans that we already have. And, you know, if, if you looked into the packet, you know, this plan is very long. A lot of it is really in the appendices. And so that, that can tell you a little bit about, a lot of work has been done. You know, we are moving more towards the items that are maybe a little harder to attack. But in general, and this is probably not news to anyone, you know, we have a growing population. That means we will use more water. You know, we can, you know, help that process along a little bit by conserving. But we're still going to use more water than we're going to use today just because we have a growing population. One aspect that makes it, that makes cities like Midvale unique and especially Midvale in and of itself is that we have relatively high population density. And we have not nearly as many single-family homes on large lots than other communities have. Therefore, we have from the get-go a lot less outdoor watering than, you know, similar-sized communities might have. And so you could see that in the report and in our previous master plans that we actually, Midvale is doing really quite well in the water conservation efforts. Is there more that we can do? Yes. And the plan, you know, sort of gets you there. The state law has very specific questions in it. And, you know, I addressed these, you know, basically step by step. And so we, we are proposing in this plan and we are already looking for money to help that process along, to look at our code and everything that has to do with landscaping and to, to make that number one more implementable. And number two, more consistent with the water efficiency requirements that the city approved that came from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And really, this is in the city's interest, it's in the citizens' interests as well to stay on top of the whole issue of water because it affects our natural environment we live in, but it also really affects our budget. When you're personal, private households and also the city. Because water is expensive, but it could, can get a lot more expensive than it is right now. Especially if we go beyond the allotment that we contracted with, with Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. So do you have any questions?
No questions. And I know this is an issue that's very near and dear to your heart. So we thank you for putting all this together. And we really have done a lot here in Midvale to do our part. And we hopefully can continue to do even more. This is also, last time you hear me say this tonight, this is a public hearing. So is there a motion for public comment?
Motion for public comment?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item is open for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to comment about this public hearing item, please step to the microphone. You'll be given three minutes. Okay, we got a thumbs up for the record in the back from Colin.
Mike was walking. I got really excited that he was going to come up here and then he sat down.
Okay, everyone in this room, we're all in agreeance. We need to do more to conserve water. Wonderful. Is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed for this item and there is a motion for the council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we recommend approval of the water use and preservation plan with the finding noting in the staff report.
So I'm going to be like annoying again? Do we need to say the ordinance number? Yeah.
That would be preferable.
Sorry, Heidi.
See how you are. Let's see. I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O dash nineteen, which adopts the Midvale City water use and preservation element of the general plan.
Seconds. Okay, we have a motion, multiple seconds. Rory, will you call the ayes and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Mikulaj.
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you for your service tonight, Vendeline. We appreciate it. Next up, we have one discussion item for tonight. Discussion on Stormwater Master Plan. And to discuss that is Jeremy Thorne, our Deputy Public Works Director. Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. December of 2023, you approved entering into a contract with Hanson Allen &amp; Luce for development of a stormwater master plan. This project has taken a little longer than we anticipated. When we initially started meetings, we handed over our GIS data to Hanson and Allen. And we were noticeably short of what we needed to complete the plan. So rather than adding expense to the contract, we used internal staff, our stormwater staff, to go out and shoot, using our equipment to shoot the points necessary. And our GIS team helped us process and get that data over to Hal. Tonight, we have with us Case &amp; Shirts, who's going to go over the stormwater master plan that's now completed. I'm going to turn my, the time over to him.
Welcome and thanks for sitting through all of our public hearings.
Thank you. Do you have my presentation or is it? I have it on my computer. I just hope my computer doesn't die on me.
Jeremy, do you have that presentation? Can you send that to me as well? Thank you.
I don't know why this is. Windows V? Windows P? Sorry, the one I'm trying to, it's showing my other screen.
Do you want me to send it to you? I lost, okay.
Should we go that route? I apologize, I don't know.
Oh, you're fine.
Well, maybe while that's coming up, I can speak to what, what Jeremy had mentioned. We, we really appreciated working with the city staff on this. You know, just so you know, that's very common that when we start looking at some of this data, oftentimes the GIS knows where everything is. Sometimes when we're doing these calculations, the, the slope of the pipe matters, the elevations of the pipe matter. And so oftentimes, lots of cities have holes in their, in their data in that way. And so the city was able to go and collect a lot of it. There still are some data that still needs to be collected, but they'll be continuing to do that process over time rather than trying to do it all in one fell swoop. It's a big lift, heavy effort. And so that was one of the things that we, that we found is that, thank you. The data is an important part of the process that we go through. We got to know where the pipes are, how big they are, what the slope is, your detention ponds. All of that data matters in this stormwater master plan. And so here's kind of a graphic of the pipes throughout your city, kind of color-coded based on diameter. There's a lot of manholes. You know, it's a large system that drains, you know, that drains the entirety of your city. And so in order to do this type of work, we have to look at little mini microcosms of a big cottonwood canyon creek where if a drop of water drops in the watershed, it all comes to one point. And so all these lines that you see up there is like a microcosm of that. That is the drainage basins that we delineated based on the terrain. So in any one of those polygons, if a drop of water fell in one of those points, it would all collect and go to a singular point. And so we, we do that so that we can break up the city and do our, our calculations to see how much we would anticipate flow-wise, how much water is going to come into these pipes at these locations. And in order to do that, we have to know what type of soils are underneath. You know, do they infiltrate well or do they not infiltrate well? And so this is pretty standard practice here. This is a soil survey done by the NRCS, a federal government entity that does these soil surveys. And A soils, which are in red, infiltrate really well. And D soils, which are the yellow, do not infiltrate very well. And then you got the B and the C in between. So it's kind of like a simplistic way of looking at, does it infiltrate well or does it not? And that helps us figure out how much runoff is going to come based on what sort of storm we have. There's lots of advancements that have been made in multi-spectral imagery. And basically that just means when you see an image, like an aerial image, it's, it's an array of colors that get put together. The reds, the greens, the blues that make up what you see. But they also tend to fly infrared bands as well. And so there's people that are smarter than me that have figured out that you can use those bands in GIS to figure out and delineate. system, as opposed to maybe some of that goes onto the lawn. Whereas if you get into like an industrial or commercial, that, that percentage is much higher, on the order of 90 to 80%. And so we take all these things into account, and we do our calculations with it. This table right here is a, it's, it's a table that we use. It's called the curve number methodology. That's the only reason I put it in here, a bunch of numbers in a table here, but basically it is how we decide how much runoff to expect from a storm event, based on what, what sort of land cover I have, on top of what type of soil I have. And so it's just, it's, it's a methodology that was developed a long time ago. It's used very frequently in this type of analysis, and it just tells us how much water we expect to runoff. So now we get into our design storm. So this, this actually, and you know, we're coming off of a week where we saw record-breaking precipitation values in Selig Valley, and Toilla got even higher than here in the Selig Valley. This is how we, this is how we determine the intensity of the rainfall that's going to happen when we're designing the storm drain system. So we look at what we call a 10-year event. And what a 10-year event actually means is not that it's going to happen once every 10 years. It means that there's a 10% chance that a storm like that could happen on any given year. That's what that means. And so we have a storm that we put in that is based on a federal study that's done by NOAA, where they decide, where they tell us, based on statistics and rain gauge data, how much rainfall that is. What is the depth of the rainfall for a 10-year event? And so we apply that, and we use this to help us define how, how much, what our peak flows are going to be, and what our volumes are going to be in the stormwater system. And so we go through all of that, and that's all well and good, but then we need to analyze the system. And then this, this represents a profile of a piped system here, where we have, the top of the red line there would represent like the road profile, and then the, the parts that are blue would represent the pipes that are underneath the street. And then the, the vertical would be the manholes in between. And so you look at this, and if you look really closely, you know, it's telling you stuff like what the diameter of the pipeline is, what its slope is, and those, those hydraulic calculations are done in these models that we develop, that help us understand what the capacity is versus how much flow is coming to those pipes, and when we compare them. And so you can see, I don't know if this points or not, you can see right here, when the, when the waters, when the water level gets to the top right there, that means that there's potential surcharging that's happening, where water could be coming up out of the manhole, because there's so much water that's got into the pipe, and the slopes are in such a way that the water wants to come out. There's not enough capacity to drain all the water that's coming to it. And so we use these tools to help us define where deficiencies are, and we also use it to help us to understand what needs to happen to resolve any deficiencies that are in the system. And so here's, here's another image of, of the system. This is color-coded such that the pipes that are red mean that they are, like the image I showed you before, they're completely full of water. Yellow are, you know, maybe halfway full, and orange are maybe three quarters the way full. And then we have nodes which represent manholes, and if the, the node is green, that means that there's no surcharging at all. And then as you get into the yellow and orange colors there, those are areas where, according to the model, and according to the data we have, there's not enough capacity in the pipeline to convey the 10-year flows. And that's, that's a pretty typical number for cities to define, to define as their level of service, 10-year event for your stormwater system to convey that amount of water. And so as we went through that, we worked with city staff, we worked with Jeremy and his team, and we looked at those locations. We, we talked with, with Roland, who's, who's out there, and he knows where all the problems are, if there are any. And so we worked very closely to try to align our model results with what's actually happening in reality. Because as, as we do our best to, you know, figure out how much water we think is coming, this is a very inexact science. There's lots of uncertainties that are involved with hydrology, and how the storms are going to hit, and the runoff that will be created. And so we worked with, with the city team to come up with projects that, that would be merited based on both model results and what they have actually seen in the field. And so in the end, as we kind of came down to it and worked together, we came up with 12 projects that we are putting on the capital improvement plan list. And this is a map of those projects. And so we've, we've put them on there, we've numbered them, and, and now I'm going to kind of just go through them each in a little more detail. And so the, the, these projects right here are kind of the heart, I would say, of the master plan, are these projects here. And these projects do a couple of things. One is the current piping in these areas is, is co-mingled with irrigation water, and a lot of these pipelines go through people's backyards. And so accessibility is a real problem for Roland and his team. And then the irrigation issue is one that I'm seeing in a lot of cities. When, at the time, it seemed like a good idea. We have pipes, we maybe don't need all of the pipe for, for irrigation, but as urbanization increases, that irrigation decreases, it's, it becomes a very difficult marriage in some ways, for the irrigation and the city stormwater to work together. And so doing these projects, one of the keys there is to be able to get the pipeline in the city right-of-way, so city crews can adequately maintain the system, and then you're also not tied to the irrigation company, and there's liability concerns. I don't know if you've seen the Spider-Man meme where Spider-Man's all pointing at each other when something bad happens, right? That's, that's the sort of situation that we're trying to get away from, is if we can disconnect from that, have our own system, we control our own destiny. And so the, the price tag on these projects here was $14.7 million for the, for the three projects that are highlighted there on Wasatch, 7800 South, and Lenox Street. Then we have just a few other projects to, to go over. These projects here are just more about connecting the system better in places where Roland and his crew have had some issues. And so these projects are about connectivity of the system, and just helping to ease some of the problems that, that they've had in these areas. And the, the price tag on those is the $670,000 for those two projects. Then we have a few more here. This one is, these projects are also centric on separating the city from the irrigation, and also creating some connectivity in some of these neighborhoods. And, and you can see up here that, like this neighborhood right here, that's the A7, that's, typically that has sheet flowed back to the street over here, but there have been some issues here. That's just creating a connection to the main trunk line and the main road, as, as well as this project over here. They've had a lot of issues with, there's a canal, well, there's a ditch that runs through right here, and they've had lots of issues right here with, with the, with the owner of that particular parcel there. And actually, Midvale and Sandy are both having issues there, and so this plan here would remove Midvale from that problem. And I don't know what Sandy's going to do, because they're more tied to this area than, than you are. You actually have a way out that we've planned here, but I don't know what Sandy's going to do. So, but if Sandy was able to convince them, I would still recommend that we stay in close contact with Sandy City if we're able to work a different solution, because if you can, it, it would be good to, to maybe figure out a way to get some, you might be able to not do some of these projects if this owner is able to work with you. And then these are, these two are also just connecting more to the system, that a couple of these neighborhoods they've had trouble with. We need to connect some of these neighborhoods to the system with a pipe system, as opposed to just relying on the, on the street drainage to take care of it. And then this, this one here, this, this is a situation on Jefferson Street where the water actually dead ends, well, the, this, the network dead ends right here, and water comes out, and then runs all the way down the gutter, then to collect down here. And so this is kind of connecting this system up down to 7200 South. And so the total price tag on this comes out to $20.7 million for all these projects. And so these are, you know, projects that could occur over time. The good, the good news is, is that overall, your system works very well. You know, Roland, you know, there weren't too many areas where he was very concerned about, and so that is the good news. And so these, these could kind of be probably viewed as, some of these might be longer-term things, depending on how things work with the budgets and everything like that. But it's good to have a number to know what to plan on. And then one of the other big parts about your, your system is aging. You have parts of your system that are corrugated metal pipe, which can become problematic because it rusts. And then oftentimes, the bottom can rust out, and those situations can become really a hazard, because now you have no integrity of the pipe, and that can actually collapse. And so one of the things that we're recommending in the master plan is that you start saving money towards annual replacement of aged pipes, $200,000 a year. And then also, to be able to identify the worst areas, you, you need a camera and inspection truck to do that. You need to be able to see the condition of the pipe and assess it to be able to know where to put those dollars to. And so that's, that's one of the other recommendations. So I already mentioned this first one. As you have connections with other cities, and you're, you're accepting water from them, it's always good to coordinate with them. With Sandy City, that's one where there's been a couple of communications with them, and, and that's been working very well. I just recommend that that continue. I just mentioned the corrugated metal pipes. You know, they had their place, but as they age, they do tend to, you know, fall apart before a concrete pipe would. And it's the separation of the stormwater with irrigation facilities. That's one of the key things. Our pipe program, camera inspection truck, annual maintenance, that, that $200,000, as you kind of save up that money and start doing replacements where needed. The watch list, I didn't explain that yet, but as we do our model, we do our best to figure out where we think problems are going to be, and sometimes that does not align. Roland might say, I've never seen a problem there. Never seen it. So we say, okay, we will put that on the watch list, and over the next several years, when there's a big storm, we want you to pay attention to that area. See if it actually is having, maybe you haven't seen it, but maybe it actually is having a problem. And so those are not, we didn't do any capital improvement plan projects for these, because we would rather have you watch those and see if it's actually a problem before you spend money to fix something like that. And then, you know, it's pretty standard practice to update these master plans about every five years to look at those. So those, that kind of summarizes our recommendations, and, and are there any questions for me? So what if we have two 10-year storms, two weekends in a row? Like, is most likely going to happen this weekend, but maybe not, hopefully, but that is the forecast, is to have another storm this weekend like last. How does a, a city, from your perspective, best plan for, for that? Yeah. It's, it's a great question, and when you have a, one, one of the key ways, as you're planning for the future, is to, when you have, say you have a 10-year event, and you have a 100-year event. One of the recommendations that we make is that you have the developer show you that they can convey the 100-year event in the streets, or to a, a pond, or something like that. And so that's one of the key pieces. Sometimes we just close our eyes and say, I hope the street can take it, right? But actually having, you know, calculations behind that to show, yeah, if we have a super big event, I'm not flooding homes. I might have, I might have six inches or a foot of water in the street, but that's okay if it's not flooding a house. And so it's, you know, and when you have these events back to back, you know, it's the maintenance, you know, you got to be ahead of it so that you, a lot more often than not, when you have flooding problems, it's because a grate is plugged, or something like that. And so just keeping up and having crews out to, you know, make sure that things are clear for when a storm's coming through, that gives you your best chance. Yeah. I appreciate that, and I know our public works team is probably busy doing that right now, cleaning some of the drains, preparing for the next storm. So thank you for all the information, Case, and we appreciate it. Jeremy, do you have a wrap-up?
If there aren't any further questions or concerns with the plan, staff is recommending that we add it to the consent agenda for next meeting.
Everybody cool with that? Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Lots of water talk tonight. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have one item. Consider the minutes of September 16th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There are a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the ayes and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Michelash.
Yes.
Oh, and Michelash. I said Glover, didn't I?
All right. You told me. I, yes, you already did.
Yeah, I'm losing track, because Bonnie's not here.
It's been a, it's been a long night.
It's been a long night. Yes, thank you.
And we have some more to go here. Next up, we have a few action items to go through. First, consider resolution number 2025-R56, appointing Mike Williams as Chair of Harvest Days Committee. Thank you, Mike, for sticking around. To do a little intro here, we have Matt Dahl, City Manager.
As you may recall, with the formation of the Harvest Days Committee, we set up a system wherein the mayor gets to select the members of the Harvest Committee. However, per the bylaws, the chair is appointed by the mayor and must be approved by the city council. The mayor has made a, an appointment of Mike Williams to be the, to be the chair, and he has accepted. I have a whole bunch of nice things to say, but I didn't want to supersede the mayor's ability to say those nice things. So I'll let him speak to that, too.
Okay. Well, I think all of us at this point know Mike very well, and Mike has, this is not his first rodeo as far as the Harvest Days goes. So very easy decision for me. I, you know, once the Harvest Days was over, I simply asked Mike if he'd be willing to serve again, and of course, Mike being Mike, community-oriented, and a big advocate for everything that we do for Harvest Days, graciously said yes. I was willing to twist his arm if I had to, but luckily, we didn't get to that. But everyone here knows Mike. Mike's been a huge part of the success that we've had with Harvest Days over the past few years. Despite what anyone might say, attendance is actually growing at Harvest Days, and, you know, some of the things that Mike has implemented as chair over the years, I would say, are directly related to that increase in attendance. So I know Mike would like us to continue and continue to say great things about him, and I will. No, I, I enjoy working with Mike. Bingo is a big one. I love seeing Mike there. He's behind the scenes. I just do the calling of the numbers. I'm the Vanah White, he's the Pat Sajek. So we, with the council's approval, we will love to have, we would love to have Mike back next year as Chair of the Harvest Days Committee. We do have a number of other appointments to the committee. Those don't necessarily have to come back to council for approval, but I will let you know, and they'll probably be some of your favorite people in the community. But we-
Uh, so very easy decision for me. Um, I, you know, once the Harvest Days was over, I simply asked Mike if he'd be willing to. Serve again, and of course, Mike being Mike, uh, community-oriented and, uh. Big advocate for everything that we do for Harvest Days graciously said yes. I was willing to twist his arm if I had to, uh, but luckily we didn't, uh, get to that. But everyone here knows Mike, uh, Mike's been a huge part of the success that we've had with Harvest Days over the past few years. Uh, despite what anyone might say, uh, attendance is actually growing at Harvest Days. Um, and, you know, some of the things that Mike has implemented as Chair over the years, I would say are directly, uh, related to that increase in. Attendance. So, um, I know Mike would like us to continue and continue to say great things about him, um, and I will. Um, no, I, I enjoy working with Mike, um, Bingo is a big one. I love seeing Mike there. He's. Behind the scenes, I just do the calling of the numbers. I'm the Vanna White, um, he's the Pat Sajek. Um, so we, with the council's approval, um, we will love to have, we would love to have Mike back next year as Chair of the Harvest Days Committee. Um, we do have a number of other appointments to the committee. Those don't necessarily have to come back to Council for approval, but I will. Let you know and they'll probably be some of your favorite people in the community. Um, but we will have a, a Vice Chair, uh, again this year, so Rebecca was the Vice Chair last year. Um, I could not convince her to be, come back on the committee, so she's taken a, at least a one-year rest. Uh, but she did say that she'd be happy to volunteer on Harvest Days, on Harvest Day of the Saturday. I'm like, well, that's great. That, that works too. Um, so we'll have a number of those appointments. Mike, I'll look to you to maybe. Select, uh, Vice Chair or however that process goes for you. Um, but without further ado, if Mike would like, do you wanna say anything? Um, not to put you on the spot, but if you want to.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Just 'cause I wanna stand up here and talk. The sewer thing was cool. Wherever that guy went, that was fun.
He's outta here. He gave us presentation. I think I heard his tires squeal.
Uh, just, uh, I hope Heidi joins me again. I hope that's her appointment to the Harvest Days Committee. She's wonderful and we have a lot of fun and giggling and. Um, so yeah, I'm excited to serve again and hopefully we can get this rolling real soon, 'cause yep, Harvest Days comes quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any, uh, questions or comments from the council?
Thank you for doing it again.
Yes, thank you.
Matt, do you have anything else to add?
Um, just, uh, following up on some of the kind comments that you've already said. Um, Mike is one of the original Harvest Day Committee members. Um, or I guess the only remaining original Harvest Days Committee member. And I think, um, that says a lot about his willingness to continue to do that. Um, it's a tough job and I think sometimes people think that, uh, the planning is done, you know, in the month, in the couple of months before the event. But, uh, as Mike said, I mean, we really generally do start in October and, um, there's a lot of time in meetings. And Mike has been doing that now for years and I appreciate his willingness to do that. Um, it's also been mentioned, uh, but I just wanna reiterate too that, um, outside of even Harvest Days, um. Mike is regularly reaching out on a variety of topics within the community. It is something that truly shows that not only does he care, but he's usually trying to come up with creative ideas to solve problems. And, um, and I just can't say enough about how much I appreciate that. And so I look forward to, uh, to this next year. Um, even if he and Heidi decide that sometimes they can have fun in the Harvest Days Committee.
Okay, this is an action item, uh, for the council to consider the appointment.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash R dash fifty-six, confirming the appointment of Mike Williams as Chair of the Harvest Day Festival Committee for the twenty-twenty-six event year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Robinson. Yes, Brown.
Yes.
Michaela.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you are unanimously approved, uh, as Chair of Harvest Days for twenty-twenty-six, so thank you for your willingness to serve in that capacity. We appreciate you. And you're free to leave if you want. Uh, next up, consider resolution number twenty-twenty-five R fifty-seven, appointing Matt Dahl, City Manager, as the Chief Administrative Officer for purposes of the Utah Government Data Privacy Act. Here to talk about that, Rory.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Some of you may have heard of the Utah Government Data Privacy Act. It was amended in twenty-twenty-five to add some additional requirements. It is a really big project to work on. This is the first step. So the first step of the Utah Government Data Privacy Act is to appoint a Chief Administrative Officer. And we have determined that would be Matt. Um, and Matt will oversee the implementation and compl- of the compliance with the Act's requirements. There's quite a few requirements. They've added training, they've added, um, we have to do within thirty days of an employee being hired, training every year for employees. Um, but they got a lot of additional, uh, requirements, a program report as well as a policy. So that's gonna be coming back to you with a lot more information. But we do have to appoint, and I'm gonna do both B and C. So we've, we do need to appoint a CAO, Chief Administrative Officer, which is going to be Matt, um, with your approval. And then we also need to appoint, uh, two, uh, privacy or records officers for the Privacy Act, and that would be. Myself and Charlie, since we already do the government records, um, management certification. So we're already certified as record officers for the city, so we figured that would be just the. Right place for us to be, is to, to take, take over this government privacy act as well. It protects the personal data of any information that we gather to make sure that the public is aware that we do not just sell it, give it away or anything else, so. These are the first two steps. It is B and C that I've just gone over, so if, uh, you wanted to approve that, if you have any questions for that, be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you, Rory. Any questions for Rory or Matt?
Thank you.
Or Charlie, who's not here?
Yeah, I didn't make her stay, yeah.
Okay, well, as Rory goes back over there. We'll do these, uh, we don't need to have additional discussion, uh, we do B and C, so we'll do, um. The motion for action item B first.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash R dash fifty-seven, appointing Matt Dahl as the Chief Administrative Officer for Midvale City in accordance with the Utah Government Data Protect- Privacy Act, sorry.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, we call the role.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Michaela.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, Matt, on being the first ever. Chief Administrative Officer for purposes of the Utah Government Data Privacy Act. Uh, moving on to action item C, um, do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash R dash fifty-eight, appointing Rory L. Andreessen and Charlie Cressel. As Midvale City Records Officers for purposes of the Utah Government Data Privacy Act.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Michaela.
Yes.
Well, Felix isn't here. Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Rory and Charlie. Uh, moving on to action item D, consider resolution number twenty-twenty-five R fifty-nine, authorizing the mayor to complete participation forms on behalf of Midvale City and join secondary manufacturer. Settlements and future opioid settlements under certain conditions. I'm here to discuss this issue that kind of just popped up randomly in my email inbox one day, uh, Garrett Wilcox, City Attorney.
Yeah, so tonight, um, you may be familiar that I think this is the fifth time you've had the City Attorney appear in front of you in the last four years. Um, asking for the city's permission, or the City Council's permission to join with the Utah State, um. Settlement of an opioid, uh, settlement with, uh, an opioid manufacturer distributor. Um, so in this particular case, there are eight secondary manufacturers that are settling with the state. Um, unlike some of our previous settlements where it's a little bit cleaner, where I can give you specific numbers and math for. Each of the, the manufacturers. Uh, this case, it's a lot more complicated. There's like a group of three that's on one's type of settlement with counties and the state. And then there's a group of five following a different formula. Um, but for the sake of trying to be as efficient as possible, they've put all eight together, um, for the settlement. Based on my understanding, it's anticipated that if all of the local sub-, uh, political subdivisions join the counties and the state with the settlement. Utah is anticipated to receive up to eight-point-eight million dollars as part of this nationwide settlement. Um, as we've discussed before, Midvale City hasn't individually sued any of these manufacturers seeking opioid. Uh, relief or whatnot, um, but I can tell you that my office and the court have directly been affected by the opioid epidemic. Um, the number of drug crimes and things that we've seen at Midvale directly related to this is very real. Um, and it's our hope by participating in this settlement. That even though Midvale City itself won't receive any of those funds, those who are providing services for, um, opioid relief, including the state and the Salt, and Salt Lake County. Will receive a bigger portion of those funds that they can use to, to, uh, benefit our, our residents. So that's kind of part one, is the same way the previous four settlements have been structured, where we join by having the mayor. Uh, fill out participation forms. We waive any claims that we're gonna sue separately from this. Um, that is part one of the request. This also brought to light that generally the Utah Attorney General's Office has been pretty good at communicating with us beforehand. Um, but with the email domain change that we went to this year. A number of things that they tried to get ahead of with these settlements were not delivered to us until the eleventh hour. Um, because they were using our old contact information and obviously that no longer works. So one of the other requests that we have with this resolution is for the City Council to pre-approve the mayor and staff. Um, to be able to fill out those participation forms moving forward under certain conditions. This will give us a little bit of flexibility to not, one, have to come back, but more importantly on some of these. Uh, for instance, this settlement agreement has to be signed by tomorrow. Um, and so to give us some amount of flexibility that when we have these come in the eleventh hour. That we can, if these conditions are met, uh, be able to, to execute those participation forms without having to request a special council meeting or something along those lines. Um, so the three criteria that we're asking the City Council to approve in order to allow staff and the mayor to, to, uh, enter these participation forms. Is that the settlement has to be negotiated, excuse me, on behalf of Utah, uh, government entities. By a Utah government entity, uh, generally the system would probably be the Utah Attorney General's Office. Um, or a firm specifically hired to represent Utah government entities. So, meaning we want someone who is looking out for local government and government's best interest, negotiating the settlement. Rather than having some unknown third party coming in and saying, this is the best thing you're gonna get, therefore you should sign. Um, the second criteria that we're, um, requesting is that we don't have any intent to. File suit against one of the named settling parties for the same or similar claims. So if it's something we as the city have already identified as important enough for us to be allocating resources and, um. Time towards, uh, we feel that before we enter any type of settlement agreement, that it would be worth coming back to the City Council to have that discussion first. Rather than, um, staff just doing that. And then the last part is that, uh, staff needs to be able to review the documents. Um, and, um, make sure that joining the settlement is in the best interest of the city from a staff review. If we're, if we're looking at it and we have heartburn over the things that are being released or the liability that the city is taking on. Um, that's something that, again, if we feel that it should be approved, we feel it's worthwhile to come back to the City Council and not shift that authority to. City staff. So with that, this resolution, it attempts to accomplish those two purposes. Allow us to enter the secondary manufacturer settlement by tomorrow. And then also to give staff and the mayor the authority to approve future, um, participation forms or similar documents. Under those three specific criteria, uh, to give more flexibility. And, and not have to be relying on coming before the City Council under tight deadlines. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
Any questions for Garrett? Thank you for putting the time into this one. I know, hopefully it'll save us a lot of time in the future if the same snafu, we'll call it, happens. But we are glad that they reached back out to us to get this signed, uh, by tomorrow, as Garrett said. So I'm literally going to wait until this meeting is adjourned and sign the documents so that there's no, uh, holdup in that. So this is an action item as well. Um, the motion is in your packet.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash R dash fifty-nine, authorizing the mayor to complete the participation forms. On behalf of Midvale City and join the secondary manufacturer settlement and future opioid settlements under certain conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Michaela.
Yes.
Uh, Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you. Uh, last action item of the evening of our City Council meeting at least, we are to consider resolution number twenty-twenty-five R sixty-one, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between Midvale City and UDOT. For the eight, uh, eight-thousand-south bridge replacement project. And here, the former employee of UDOT, uh, to talk about this is Brandon Anderson.
Sure. I'm, I'm glad the council and everybody enjoyed the engineering class that we had earlier. 'Cause I know you weren't paying attention that closely. Did you follow it?
Maybe.
Maybe. I was sitting there.
I know that our pipes aren't big enough.
Yeah.
I'm explaining it to some of the staff back there and they're like, what? I'm like, never mind, I'll, I'll be quiet. Just keep going. So this project, um, come to us and ironically say that mayor and the fact that the reason there's a betterment. 'Cause I know about betterments and how they work. And so what happened was back when Keith was here, Keith and Steve, we had a pavement project go through here. But the tracks, um, wouldn't let us 'cause we didn't have agreement in place, and so you gotta get a permit from them. So we weren't with our paving project about three or four years ago, weren't able to pave up to the tracks. And so this spot right here is not paved and never got paved because we can't go close to the tracks. With the project that is, let's see, where is it? I don't know which one it is for the pointer. Right there, that bridge. This is the bridge that's getting replaced. And so with that, they're paving out to the purple line there on the left side of the screen to me. Um, they are paving to that with the bridge, 'cause they'll do the bridge and then they'll go out a little bit further to make sure it ties back in. This betterment is for that cost to be able to, 'cause they're already getting a tracks permit to work close enough to the tracks and let us work in there to redo the bridge. Um, with, whoops, sorry. With that being said, it is a UDOT-sponsored. It's, this is a, our project. Uh, that's, UDOT is over all structures in the state, and so that's kind of how they have the oversight. They got federal funding, it was brought to us, so it's sponsored by them through that federal funding to replace this bridge as it was in that. Um, as they inspect it, they go through and identify deficiencies and this is one to reinforce and replace. Um, they will be built in the off-season either this winter or next, so they'll bid them and they tie them to two other projects. That are very close. One of them's actually down the road in Sandy. It's still on eight-thousand-south. With that being said, they're allowing the contractor to pick which bridge they start first. And so that's why I say it could be this off-season that they start this. Or it could be next, depending on when they, when the contractor wants to start that work. It is a lump sum to us for that area that's there. They'd have to reconstruct and lower the manholes and, um, valve boxes, catch basins that are in that area as well. With that, is there any questions? It was for thirty-thousand, thirty-three-thousand-three-fifty-two. It's a lump sum. Um, so we pay that as a betterment. And. If it goes lower, they get a little break. If it goes higher, they pay a little bit more for us, so. I reviewed it, looked at it, evaluated the estimate. It looked good from that perspective.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Any questions from council? All right, this is an action item as well. The resolution, uh, motion is in your packet.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash R dash sixty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with UDOT for the eightieth south bridge replacement project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Michaela.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Uh, we do not have a closed session tonight, so we'll skip over that and go to Paul's favorite thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned from our City Council meeting. We do have an RDA meeting as well tonight.
Mayor, I need just a few minutes.
Okay. Yes. How about we take a five-minute break and come back here at nine-thirty? I got the gavel. So, welcome back, everyone. We are magically read adjourned into our redevelopment agency of Midvale City. Welcome those still in attendance from the public. Luke Giovanni, thanks for remaining. We will start as we do normally do with a roll call. Will you see who is here, Rory?
Yes, Board Member Mikulaj.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Robinson, here. And Glover.
Here.
Board Member Billings is excused.
Okay, that is all of us. We are all here. Next up, public comments. Anyone wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City at this point. Nope, Luke is shaking his head, Giovanni's shaking his head, no. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have one item to consider, the minutes of September 16th, 2025, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Board Member Mikulaj.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We have a pair of action items tonight, the first of which is to consider Resolution Number 2025-10, RDA, approving amendments to the term sheet for a business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and the Honeysuckle Coffee Company, LLC. And here to talk about that is Aubrey.
Good evening, everybody. Wake up a little bit, get excited, talk about barbecue, you know, it's going to be super exciting. Okay, so bringing back this honeysuckle term sheet for you guys. As you've seen, there is not a huge progress in the construction yet for the building, therefore Honeysuckle is not going to be able to open by the end of the year, as they previously had assumed. So the only thing that we're going through and adjusting is in the previous term sheet, it was December 1st, 2025, that they would have to start making payments on the loan, whereas they're planning on opening in the summer of 2026. So if they open before July 1st, they'll start paying before then. Otherwise, we're hoping July 1st is going to be the opening date for them. So everything else, maintain the same, $250,000, seven years, 0% interest. And any questions? Otherwise, there's a motion.
Okay, thank you, Aubrey. Any questions for Aubrey or staff? Okay, motion is up there.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 2025-10, RDA, approving amendments to the term sheet for a business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and Honeysuckle Coffee Co., LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Mikulaj.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and we are looking forward to them coming, although it might be six months later, but that's okay. It's going to be a better product.
Summer barbecue.
Yes, that's true. Okay, second action item tonight, consider Resolution Number 2025-11, RDA, approving the term sheet for an adaptive reuse loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and 7511 Main Street, LLC.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so brought this to you guys, sorry, excuse me, brought this to the board, last meeting, and essentially this is the building that we're waiting for the reconstruction to be completed so that Honeysuckle can go into it. Demolition has started on the property. At this point, we are just waiting for loan approval and closing so that we can get funds out and get that construction really started out there. So the loan terms are the same as the last meeting, $250,000, seven years for the term, 0% interest, and then just this will be payment starting in June, because hopefully the building will be done prior to the business opening. And 100% collateral, and then the proposed floor plan has not changed since the last meeting either. Any questions?
Any question for Aubrey or staff? Nope. Okay, motion is on the board.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 2025-11, RDA, approving the term sheet for an adaptive reuse loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and 7511 Main Street, LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, for the final time tonight, will you call the roll?
Yes. Board Member Robinson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mikulaj.
Yes.
And Glover.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Aubrey. We do not have a closed session tonight, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Is there anyone, anyone opposed? All of those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.